The chair, the chair's gone under. He's sick.
I mean, some of those questions are like, you know.
You got the tape?
Mike Clark says six.
I've got six, too. Yep, we'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 11th, 2023 to order at 6:00 P.M. Role call, we have Lawson Wilson, Brett, Brett Whitlam, spelled correctly, W-I-T-H-A-M, Beth Gott, Jeff Young, myself, Mark Good. Okay. Let's see where we need to make any adjustment or adoption to the agenda. Minutes, February 14th, 2023. We, we don't have minutes from our last meeting, right?
Correct.
Because the new person hasn't done them yet, or?
Correct, she's working.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's her name again?
Heidi.
Heidi, you have a last name?
Smallledge.
Oh, okay.
What's Smallledge she belong to? Do you know what Smallledge she belongs to?
Northeast Smallledge.
Yep.
That's small.
Well, I'm related, no, I'm related to him, so somehow, I think. Because Aunt Carol's related to everybody, or something like that.
Okay. I didn't see anything, I can add any questions about anything, anybody else?
For the minutes?
Huh?
The, the minutes, you're saying?
Yeah.
Good to be.
Did she do these, or did you do them?
She did these, I did the checklists, sorry.
So she doing these off the tape, does that happen?
Yes.
I'll move the minutes to the 14th, we approve.
Second. Motion second on the table to approve the minutes of February 14th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, unanimous? Okay, subdivision amendment application, Lighthouse subdivision. Now, something came up, Jeff, did, you happen to watch the tape from this?
No.
So you weren't here for the first part of this?
No.
Which means you should probably not participate unless you had seen that. I wish we had the minute, I would have been happy if you just could read the minutes from the meeting. Jesse, what do you think?
I mean, it's really up to the board and, and the applicant. The applicant is opposed to him participating.
Who was it?
It's not a big application.
I, I understand, I don't think it's gonna be all. Just for consistency's sake, I know that Beth and I had to do it on an application, I think.
For me, it seems like if you, since there's a separation between completeness and finding the fact, is, do you think that you abstain between the two? If we had already started the findings of fact, and started discussion on that, then I would see how.
That'd be a little different.
That would be different. But, the four of us got a complete, that's great. Tonight, we're actually like looking by the fact and do the substantive review. And I, I would feel fine with Jeff just spinning.
The way it says it's worded in the manual, if a board member has not been able to attend every meeting at which the board discussed substantive evidence regarding a particular application, it is arguable that such a board member cannot participate in making the decision on an application because it would violate due process.
Is it clear?
The problem is, I have no problem with him participating, I think he'd do fine.
What about Tom?
Is it clear that if completeness review is part of, is that substantive content or something?
I would say so, but, you know, I, I was asleep that day in law school.
Jeff, have you read the, or reviewed the materials for this meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, then you want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to allow and encourage justice in tonight's meeting.
Okay.
I'm excited about the encourage part.
Don't encourage him too much now. I don't even know if we need to make a motion. I, I mean, I think if, if we just, it's just reflect the vote, the vote's just reflected in the. And we, you know, this will be part of the, the discussion in the, in the minutes that we inquired as to Jeff's, you know, familiarity with the applicant, and he said that he's reviewed the materials, so I think it's fine.
Tom, you don't have any problems, right?
I do not.
Okay.
And I think the minute should reflect the applicant does not have any problems.
There you go, perfect.
Yeah.
Well, you can't appeal that way, honor.
Good.
I didn't sleep that day, well.
I, I'm sorry, Jeff, I should have realized that you weren't here at that last meeting, and of course, our CEO, you know, was in the hospital, is he out of the hospital?
As far as I know, yes.
So the motion just dies on the table?
Yeah, yeah, there was no, yeah.
No second of this, great.
There was no second, or I don't even think you actually made a motion.
I did.
With the complete, okay.
I killed it, sorry.
Okay, okay. Moving right along here. Look through the findings of fact, of course, we need a, a motion on each one of these. And this is for the Lighthouse subdivision amendment number two. And I'm looking at the pollutions. Proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. In making this determination, you'll at least consider the elevation of land above sea level in relation to floodplains, nature of soils and subsoils, their ability to adequately support wastewater, slope of the land, its effect on effluents, availability of streams for disposal of effluents, and the applicable state and local health and water rules and regulations.
I'll make a motion that the pollution criteria has been met because the proposed amendment to subdivision will not have any undue effect on water or air pollution based on the fact that this amendment relocates a lot line, well, subject to things that are existing.
Second. Motion second on the table to find that the pollution condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? If we get five zip. Sufficient water, proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the foreseeable needs of the subdivision.
I make a motion that the sufficient water requirement has been met because the proposed amendment will not have any effect on the water available for the need of subdivision, and because it's a simple lot line adjustment.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the sufficient water condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Municipal water supply, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water supply if one is to be used.
I'll make a motion that municipal water supply requirement is not applicable because there is no public water supply.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the municipal water supply condition is not applicable because there's no public water supply available. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Erosion, proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition exists.
I'll make a motion that the erosion requirement has been met because the amendment will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results because no clearing or proposed excavation, no clearing or excavation are proposed.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the erosion condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zip. Traffic. Proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe road conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing and proposed, and if the proposed subdivision requires driveways or entrances onto a state or state aid highway located outside the urban compact area of an, an urban compact municipality as defined by Title 23, Section 705-4, the Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicating that the driveway or entrances conform to Title 23, Section 704, and any rules adopted under that section.
I'll make a motion that the traffic requirement has been met because the amendment will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion because it's just a relocation of lot lines.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the traffic condition has been met for stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Sewage disposal, proposed subdivision will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal and will not cause an unreasonable burden on municipal services if they are utilized.
I'll make a motion that the sewage disposal requirement has been met because all sewage disposal systems are existing.
Second. Motion is sent to the table to find that the sewage disposal condition has been met because all sewage disposal systems are existing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five nothing. Municipal solid waste disposal. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized.
I'll make a motion that this reasonable solid waste disposal requirement has been met because the lot line adjustment will not affect the disposal of solid waste.
Second. Motion is second to find the municipal solid waste disposal condition has been met because the lot line adjustment will not affect disposal of solid waste. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife or the municipality, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas or any public rights away from physical or visual access to the shoreline.
I'll make a motion that the aesthetic, cultural, and natural values requirement has been met because the amendment does not have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area as defined in the criteria.
I'll second. Motion and second on the table to find this condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. Proposed subdivision conforms with a duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan, if any. In making this determination, the municipal reviewing authority may interpret these ordinances and plans.
I'll make a motion that the conformity with local ordinances and plans requirement has been met because the proposed amendment conforms to a duly adopted subdivision regulation and for, for ordinance, the comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the conformity with local ordinances and plans condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Zero. Financial and technical capacity. The subdivider has adequate financial, which is still spelled wrong on these, and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section.
I'll make a motion that the financial and technical capacity requirement has been met because the option of relocating a property line does not require additional development.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the financial and technical capacity condition has been met because relocating the property line does not require additional development. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's my goal sometime before my term is up to get that financial fix. I've been complaining about it for years.
Your stamp on this town. Fennec off.
Spell check doesn't pick that up.
You know, it must not, because it's a template that we use for that statement, but off the double check.
You know, financial spelled right in the, the condition, that bold, but not. Surface waters outstanding river segments. Whenever situated entirely or partially within the watershed of any pond or lake or within 250 feet of any wetland, great pond or river, as defined in Title 38, Chapter 3, Subchapter 1, Article 2B, the proposed subdivision will adversely affect the quality of that body of water or unwisely affect the shoreline of that body of water. A, when lots in the subdivision, this is longer.
I might save you some time.
Okay, go right ahead.
See, I'll make a motion that the surface waters outstanding river segments is not applicable because no portion of subdivision is in the watershed of any pond or lake.
Uh, second. Motion second on the table to find the surface waters outstanding river segments condition is not applicable because there's no portion of subdivision within the watershed of any pond or lake. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
So finnicle is actually a word, it means attention to detail.
That's why, that's why, that's why spell check doesn't pick that up.
Is that where finicky comes?
Giving, giving careful attention to detail, so it's actually a word, that's why it's spelled.
Can we hit on the sign out front on the, on the street? Thank you, Mark Good, for finical support. Mark Good is the most finical lady more member we've ever had.
Fennec of all financial situations.
Wish I was as finicky with my finances. Uh, anyway, moving right along here, groundwater. I'm sure Tom has stuff to do.
He doesn't want to go home.
Yeah, it's a lot of work just to move, line six feet isn't it? Groundwater, the proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
I'll make a motion that the groundwater requirement has been met because the proposed amendment will not affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the groundwater condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Flood areas. I won't read it, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion that the flood areas requirement has been met because no structures will be built within the flood zones as defined by the, by FEMA and the other requirements within the ordinance.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the flood areas condition has been met because no structures will be built within the flood zone. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Once again, five nothing. Freshwater wetlands, all freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified on any map submitted as part of the application regardless of the size of the wetlands. Any mapping of freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of local soil and water conservation district.
I'll make a motion that the freshwater wetlands requirement has been met because there are no freshwater wetlands, because the freshwater wetlands have been identified on the plans. No freshwater wetlands have been identified on the plans submitted as part of the application.
Tuck it. Uh, motion and second on the table to find the freshwater wetland condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five nothing. River stream or brook. Any river stream or brook within, or budding the proposed subdivision has been identified on any map submitted as part of the application where purposes of the section river stream or brook has the same meaning as in Title 38, Section 480B, Subsection 9.
I'll make a motion that the river stream or brook requirement, or brook requirement has been met because those streams have been identified on the plan submitted as part of the application.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the river stream or brook condition has been met because no stream has been identified on the plan submitted as part of the application. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, stormwater, proposed subdivision provide for adequate stormwater management.
I'll make a motion that the stormwater requirement has been met because the proposed subdivision amendment will follow best practices for adequate stormwater management for any future development, and none is proposed this time.
Second. Stormwater condition has been met, we have a motion and second on the table that it's been met, and for stated reason, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Spaghetti lots prohibited. Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion that the spaghetti lots prohibited requirement has been met because none of the lots created have the, a lot depth to shore frontage ratio greater than five to one.
Second. Motion second on the table that spaghetti lots prohibited condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Zero. Lake phosphorus concentration.
I'll make a motion that the lake phosphorus concentration requirement is not, is not applicable because no portion of the placement is located near the great, the great pond.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the lake phosphorus concentration, something good on TV tonight, is not applicable for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five nothing. Impact on adjoining municipality.
I'll make a motion that the impact on adjoining municipality requirement is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment crosses municipal borders.
Second. Motion second on the table to find the impact on adjoining municipality condition is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment crosses municipal boundaries. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Once again, five zero. Land subject to liquidation harvesting.
I'll make a motion that the land subject to liquidation harvesting requirement has been met because no timber harvest on this parcel has occurred.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find that the land subject to liquidation harvesting condition has been met because no timber harvest has occurred on the parcel. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Okay. How about a motion to approve the amendment to subdivision, light number, amendment number two, Lighthouse subdivision?
I'll make a motion to approve subdivision application, amendment number two, for Lighthouse subdivision, Tax map two, lot 12F2, 12F3, and 12F4.
Second. Motion is second on the table to approve the subdivision application for amendment two for the Lighthouse subdivision. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five nothing, okay. Do we sign that tonight? Oh, great.
I ask a question, are they signing?
Oh, I guess so.
I've got another subdivision that will be coming to you shortly. It's a real subdivision, not a band-aid. But, the road is going to be 1,300 feet long. It's off the Cape Road. It's an existing road. Your ordinance says you can have a T turnaround up to 800. I've got a 1,300 foot road, I was wondering if you'd consider a T turnaround. It's, a cul-de-sac takes up so much room. I know your ordinance says what it says, probably not any give in that. But, that's a question if you want to ponder it.
I, I don't have an answer for you, no, interesting. It's, how long is the road? 1,300 feet?
It's gonna, it's 1,300 feet within my property, and then it goes into a, it dead ends in a house lot. It's on the water, that's just a little bit of water frontage, but.
Where in the Cape Roads is?
It's on the north end. Bill Ferneil used to own the land. I don't know if you're familiar with that, there used to be a little trailer across it. You go past the butlers, over the hill, and go down onto the flat on the bar of the hill, but we're right on there.
I passed a trail that was removed?
It's across the road from that trailer, that's just, it's across the road from what is now a vacant lot. They put a couple of law there.
Right, right.
One seventy-five.
So it's on the, it's on the water side?
Correct, but it is not, doesn't have any water frontage. It's more or less in family division. Not that that makes any difference.
This is a brand new subdivision.
Brand new subdivision, but it's kind of a in the family subdivision, not a gift situation that family members have the majority of the lots.
And what size lots generally?
Oh, three forty, there's some are down, I think there's two going to be around an acre.
One of the questions that would come up for me would be fire access and other water vehicles.
I would work with Keith and we'd do something that he's satisfied with. Obviously, a T turnaround works for you guys up to 800 feet. And we build something that he's happy with, but we do go beyond where we're at 1,300. I just didn't know if there was any give in.
Is that in the subdivision ordinance?
It is.
Okay.
I have to look at it, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't look at, I mean, it seems like.
It'd be nice if we had like something to look at plan wise.
Right, yeah, yeah, so we're not ready to make any decisions right now, but no, no, it does seem like.
I move that we approved it. You did all the motions, I had to wash it.
As long as we each get a lot in the subdivision, right?
Two lots.
I mean, I'm thinking the, I, I don't know, it's, it's, I'm just trying to think like why, like why? I don't think, a cul-de-sac is probably, it's quicker and safer because it's more traffic and sort of rotate through it, whereas a T, I think you're saying someone's going to pull in and kind of do a point turn to get out, is that, is that what that is?
Well, you drive by, back in, and.
Right, 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 as opposed, as opposed to just circulating through.
Yeah.
You know, I'm trying to think, because I know, what is it, where the road in Bass Harbor down there that has a cul-de-sac at the end?
Bass Harbor Woods?
Yeah, doesn't it have a cul-de-sac at the end?
Yes, it does, yeah.
If you have a trailer, a T turnaround, I mean.
It's not as good as a.
Not as good as a cul-de-sac, and so.
So it goes on at the end of the road, no trailers allowed?
Or just no people who are new at driving trailers.
Well, the thing would be emergency vehicles, I would think.
But a cul-de-sac, you think, takes mu?
Well, that's what was my question.
Oh, it does, yes.
Because of, you just gotta be.
The cul-de-sac is 65 foot radius, so you're 130 feet across it. So you've got an 18 foot road, and you're going to go 65 feet both sides. Because this is going to be a through road, so we're going to have a whole lot of gravel because the road's got to go straight through to get to the other house lot, and then we're going to have a 65 foot radius off both sides.
You can't just do a circle.
Well, that is a circle.
Uh, no.
The road's got to go straight through, but you're going to have this tig rock on each side.
Well, we want a.
No road in there now?
Yes.
Oh, there is a road?
Yes, there's a, goes into the house at the end.
The house is existing.
Oh, okay.
So they need to, by subdividing it.
You've got to do.
It is 1,300 feet now, but it's just one house at the end. So the subdivision ordinance says if the road is that long in a subdivision, it should have a cul-de-sac.
And I think you're saying the, like, if they're, if it was all the same family, then they wouldn't care, like, they wouldn't care if there were, and I think that, was that your kind of point, the same?
It's just, it doesn't fit in the area, it's not going to be very attractive.
Yeah.
Cul-de-sacs are generally not very attractive, they just, it's going to be out of character for this area.
You know, it's like.
Yeah, because they usually don't do anything in the middle.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's put an island, some plant.
I, I, I mean, we have a couple, and there's nothing in the middle, like, on Indian Point, but.
Well, this one's different where it's going to be a through road, has to continue to be a through road.
So it would continue after the cul-de-sac?
Right, yeah, it goes into the house lot at the end.
To the house, yeah.
What was that?
Oh, the T isn't at the end.
Well, it goes through.
Is it a driveway at the end, or a road at the end?
The existing house lot at the end.
So get into that.
No, at the end of the subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Golly, I missed all that.
What a shame.
Yeah, I can see where that would.
Is it 500 feet?
He got me there for a second, right?
How long a road at the end? I mean, from the cul-de-sac to the, to the house?
It's going to be, if, if we're required to put it right at the end of the road, it's going to be right in that door yet. We're going to have this cul-de-sac, is, I'm sure they're not going to be pleased with it. The people that own the house, the house lot is not in the subdivision.
The other side.
Oh, it's not?
Oh.
That's interesting.
Yeah, that's not part of the subdivision.
It's not the family either?
No.
That's the less part.
Do they know about it yet?
Of the more or less.
I think they do. Bill Ferneil had this, and he split it, he sold the house lot, he sold the land from the house lot out to Cape Road.
I'd say Ruth did that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that is.
It's a rental, I, they, I don't think.
Oh, one of those.
Yeah, but still, I don't think they're going to be pleased with it, yeah. Is it something that I could, I asked Keith about it the last meeting I was here, and he. he just kind of turned around and said that he didn't hear me.
He said ask the board. Smart. I feel like I would need.
We could like turn around.
Good move. Yeah. I feel like I would need a line even though what you're talking about.
It'd be kind of fun to.
Cape Road?
To see the.
I think. Yeah, I mean, at least a sketch of what you're saying, you know, it doesn't have to be perfectly detailed would be helpful.
I think the, the way they would work this, first you would talk to the court, first you would go to the court enforcement officer and say, you know, what do you think? And then, and then if it comes to us, we'd look at it. I don't know, like, if it says what it says, it says what it says. Like, I don't know.
Do we have flexibility in the ordinance to?
To just waive requirements? That's the question. Do we have flexibility? Or does it waive requirements? I don't know.
It's a granted variance at all, you know, I mean, it's a question.
Be waiving.
Yeah, can we get a waiver? We'd have to waive. I don't know what the waiver requirements are. I don't know.
The conversation, I mean, we had this conversation a little bit in the last meeting that all of your decisions are up to interpretation, so.
Do whatever we want.
I think I would need a really compelling argument for why.
Against the safety fees?
For both why a T is better than a cul-de-sac in this case and how a T satisfies all the things that a cul-de-sac needs it to do and would need to work, which is to say that like after this conversation, I'm coming away skeptical, Tom, like, I'm like, I don't know, just to be transparent.
Well, I'll, would it be okay if I asked?
Remember the train things when you pulled up on the, and it just wrote?
Yeah, right, exactly. I mean, certainly Keith is a part of it, but I've also, like, I think that the ordinance, I, I'm wondering also, like, if we're building a subdivision, it's about safety, but it's also about like, I don't know, personal access and stuff. So if you're, I don't know how many houses are going to be on here, but half a dozen homes are using this, there's a reason at some point that somebody thinks, thought that if it's a road that long, it should have a cul-de-sac.
I think it usually goes back to fire.
McKinley Lane has a cul-de-sac too.
Yeah.
McKinley Lane, right, at the end of that, that's a.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it is.
It's usually all about fire safety.
Yeah.
The fire department usually dictates.
Yeah, with us, it's usually about the ordinance.
What's that?
With us, it's usually about the ordinance.
Right, but the, the ordinance states in some kind of.
That's usually where it comes from, is the turnaround at the end of a subdivision is usually as a result of the fire chief.
And it does specify the size of a cul-de-sac specifically?
I can't remember what it is, thirty or forty.
And how many lots are going in?
I think six. I can give you a plan.
We will see.
Well, I'll, we're just kind of in the beginning stages.
If you could just get us a sketch plan or something so we know later what's talking in the road.
But how do you?
You'd have to turn around someone's wrist?
You just, you just have to build a checklist or you'd have to, because these are great lots.
There's a T turnaround off Long Hill subdivision, one of the.
I'm trying to think of a.
I think so.
Oh, yeah.
At some point.
At Southwest Harbor.
Yeah, if you wanted to see it too.
Oh, which street?
Stumbroad. It's a, a Long Hill.
Oh, yeah.
At the top there, where the sign for the Lobsters.
Yep, yep.
I can't think of the people's name.
Bemby Bracy.
Yeah, Bemby Bracy.
I bought Lobsters from them.
Yeah.
But there's a big, but there's also a small, a big circle.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, sorry we couldn't answer that better, but.
Well, I wondered if you could just add.
Okay. So in the next meeting, we have Orchard Hill. And you did get an opinion on, at least from Maine Municipal.
Yeah, I got a legal opinion from Maine Municipal.
Maybe you could share that with everybody. Remember we asked about, it was basically what, you know, they were asking about whether site plan review kicked in on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It had to do with, what would trigger it would be the road and bringing in Phil.
Yep.
So essentially, the opinion from Maine Municipal's legal department was, in general, they advised that the board not advise applicants which applications would also be submitted, that you should just review as been submitted and stay out of saying, well, I also think you should submit a site plan application. They did ask you, but essentially they said, again, any of your decisions are subject to appeal, so it's, you know. As, they felt as long as you could in a motion point to why and something in the ordinance, so.
Reasonable, a reasonable.
Right, so don't say, we moved to review these two because this one's similar. Say, we moved to review these two and not site plant because Article Four excludes two dwelling units. So it's that you picked a reason in the ordinance as to why I wasn't applying.
I don't know if we have it quite more clean.
I think we, I mean, I don't, we don't, from the last one, we could in April, in the next meeting.
You could make.
I think we could make a motion that says that, you know, essentially we just ignore the criteria that suggests that we do include it.
The road thing.
The road.
In your motion.
In our motion, we say.
And I also pointed out when I talked to Mark that that section regarding the roads does specify construction or expansion of existing roads greater than twenty-five hundred square feet within a three-year period. So without asking great for the exact calculations, ninety percent of the roads are currently there. So are they creating this new?
New, that much.
Are they creating twenty-five hundred square feet of new roads?
Does that matter if the old roads, the losing ones were never permitted?
Is it a road or a driveway? They, I asked if they were permitted at the site visit, and they said yes.
Not through here because it didn't.
Didn't require a planning board review, yeah.
I see, so you could.
Because you have to see, like, I don't know when you put them all in, or did you put them all in once, or did you put five hundred feet in this year?
The CEO would have approved that, right?
Right.
Fair enough.
Anything else, anybody?
I'll make a motion to schedule our next meeting for April twenty-fifth.
Second. Motion is second on the table to schedule next meeting for April twenty-fifth, six o'clock right here, town office meeting room, all in favor?